You may have to hit the arrow. All right, go.
Okay. Lanier, what do you think? Bear with us, folks. We'll count ourselves any minute now. Love technology. One more minute, we're going to count heads. You record the roll when you get back up here, please. We'll move on. Thank you. Staff announcements.
Yes, sir. I have just a few announcements. First, you noticed that Mr. Horn isn't here this evening. Joe's taken a well-deserved few days off visiting family. Secondly, I think as Joe mentioned to you last month, we put together a training session for all that we'll have just prior to your September meeting. Sam Edwards with the Greater National Regional Council is going to be here and he'll lead that training. I think we'll begin at 5:00, and we'll feed you that evening, too. And we'll send a reminder out in advance of that session.
Could you carry that one step further, please, and make that a phone call?
Yes, we'd be happy to.
That would help me. I'll be honest with you. I appreciate it. Thank you. Go ahead.
And then finally, there's a revised report in front of you for item 10, and the revised recommendations. And that has already been incorporated into the consent agenda this in front of you as well.
Thank you. Consideration the minutes of July 11, 2013. Any changes or corrections?
Is there a move for approval?
Motion made and seconded. Can we vote yet, ladies? Voice vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Thank you. Any objections, staff?
No, sir.
Consideration the consent agenda. Item, agenda items 1 through 22. Any commissioner wishing to pull an item for separate consideration, please say so now, otherwise we'll take it as a whole. Anyone? Staff?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Beginning with item number 3, Belchase, Section 1, Maintenance Bond for Roads Drainage and Erosion Control. Recommendation: Release the bond. Item 4, Belchase, Section 2, Maintenance Bond for Roads Drainage and Erosion Control. Recommendation: Extend in the current amount for 6 months. Item 5, Brins Valley Addition, Section 1, Maintenance Bond for Water. Recommendation: Release the bond. Item 6, Brins Valley, Section 3, Maintenance Bond for Roads Drainage and Erosion Control. Recommendation: Extend in the current amount for 6 months. Item 7, Cartcon 1, Airsoft Field, Performance Bond for Landscaping. Recommendation: Review at the December 2013 meeting. Item 8, Chardonnay, Section 3, Maintenance Bond for Water. Recommendation: Review at the September 2013 meeting. Item 9, Ivan Creek, Performance Bond for Landscaping. Recommendation: Reduce performance amount to $24,100 for 6 months with a review in 3 months. Item 10, Kings Chapel, Section 4A, Performance Bond for Wastewater Collection System. Recommendation: Convert to maintenance in the amount of $12,000 for 1 year. Item 11, Parish Presbyterian Church, Maintenance Bond for Landscaping. Recommendation: Release the bond. Item 12, Silverstream Farm, Section 4A, Performance Bond for Roads Drainage and Erosion Control. Recommendation: Extend in the current amount for 6 months. Item 13, Silverstream Farm, Section 6A, Performance Bond for Landscaping. Recommendation: Reduce to maintenance in the amount of $2,500 for 8 months. Item 14, Silverstream Farm, Section 6A, Performance Bond for Water. Recommendation: Release the bond. Item 15, Silverstream Farm, Section 6A, Performance Bond for Roads Drainage and Erosion Control. Recommendation: Convert to maintenance in the amount of $40,000 for 1 year. Item 16, Silverstream Farm, Section 6B, Performance Bond for Water. Recommendation: Extend in the current amount for 1 year. Item 17, Silverstream Farm, Section 6B, Performance Bond for Water. Recommendation: Convert to maintenance in the amount of $3,000 and review at the November 2013 meeting. Item 18, Silverstream Farm, Section 6B, Performance Bond for Landscaping. Recommendation: Reduce to maintenance in the amount of $16,300 for 8 months. Item 19, Silverstream Farm, Section 6B, Performance Bond for Roads Drainage and Erosion Control. Recommendation: Convert to maintenance in the amount of $50,000 for 1 year. Item 20, Stockit Creek, Section 1, Maintenance Bond for Roads Drainage and Erosion Control. Recommendation: Extend in the current amount for 6 months. Item 21, Stockit Creek, Section 2, Maintenance Bond for Roads Drainage and Erosion Control. Recommendation: Extend in the current amount for 6 months. And finally, item 22, Stockit Creek, Section 3, Maintenance Bond for Roads Drainage and Erosion Control. Recommendation is to extend in the current amount for 6 months.
Any questions on consent?
Is there a move for approval? Recommendation, staff?
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Everything will be by voice vote tonight. We cannot get this thing to load up. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item 23, Revised Concept Plan Review for the Grove containing 820 lots on 1,176 acres located off Arno Road in the 2nd Voting District. Staff?
A revised site plan, now called a concept plan, for this development was approved at the March 2012 meeting. The applicant is requesting a reapproval of the site plan in order to revise a traffic-related stipulation of approval. As part of the original approval, the applicant was required to make a number of off-site roadway improvements to mitigate traffic impacts associated with the development. One of those improvements entails reconfiguring the eastbound and westbound ramps from State Route 840 to Arno Road in order to provide channelized right turns. The previous approval required that these improvements be implemented in conjunction with the 201st lot in the development. The applicant is requesting to postpone these improvements until a later stage in the development. Pursuant to that request, the applicant has submitted a traffic study which focuses on identifying more specifically when these State Route 840 ramp improvements will be necessary based on projected traffic volumes. The county's traffic consultant has reviewed the study, and based on their analysis of the data is recommending that these improvements be implemented in conjunction with the 520th lot in the development. Based on this recommendation, staff recommends reapproval of the site plan with the same stipulations established in conjunction with the March 2012 approval, except that the State Route 840 ramp improvements must be constructed or under construction prior to the final plat approval that includes the 520th lot within the development. And, Mr. Chairman, there, on the backside of this report, there is, there are a few stipulations that were inadvertently printed on this side. That's the end of this report, though.
So, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any questions, staff? Comments? Please?
Yes, sir. It be that improved or under construction. I think under construction, I would be wiped out. I think if they're going to do it, if you're going to give them twice as long to get it done, they ought to get it done and have it done at that time.
Must be constructed. Is that what you wanted?
Reed?
Yes.
Is that your motion?
So moved.
Motion and seconded. Any further discussion? None? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 24, Preliminary Plat Review for Blackberry Ridge containing 15 lots on 144.9 acres located off Bending Chestnut Road in the 1st Voting District. Staff?
For this development was approved in June of 2013. The applicant is now requesting preliminary plat approval of this development, which consists of 15 lots on approximately 145 acres. The proposed preliminary plat is identical in layout to that depicted on the concept plan. As identified at concept plan review, a number of items were to be addressed at the preliminary plat stage. All applicable items have been addressed to staff satisfaction, including identification of critical lots and placements of applicable notes on the plat. The Department of Sewer's Disposal Management is currently reviewing the request, and its approval is expected by meeting date. The applicant is requesting a design variance for the entrance curve radius. Staff supports this variance request. The plat is in order, and staff recommends approval of the request and the requested variance. In conjunction with final plat consideration, the following items will need to be addressed. Number 1, applicants shall submit HOA documents for review and approval by the county attorney's office. The approved HOA documents must be recorded prior to the recording of the final plat. Number 2, establishment of performance bonds for roads drainage and erosion control. Number 3, establishment of a performance bond for water improvements as specified by HB and TS Utility District. Number 4, submission and approval of landscaping plans and establishment of a performance bond for the same. Number 5, execution of a stormwater maintenance agreement and submission of an operation and maintenance plan for stormwater improvements. And number 6, submission of the approved final plat in DWG format on recordable media based on the Tennessee State Plan Coordinate System prior to signature and recording of the final plat. One additional item, Mr. Chairman. The Department of Sewer's Disposal Management has approved this request.
Questions, staff? Comments? Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? I hear none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 25, Preliminary Plat Review for the Grove, Phase 1 revised, containing 112 lots on 544 acres located off Arno Road in the 2nd Voting District. Staff?
A preliminary plat for Phase 1 of this development was initially approved at the October 2007 meeting, and a revised preliminary plat for this phase was approved at the September 2012 meeting. The applicant is now requesting approval of another revised preliminary plat for this phase in order to make some minor modifications to the boundary between Phase 1 and Phase 3, which is on the agenda as item 26. In conjunction with previous preliminary plat approvals, this body granted design speed variances on several roadways and a cul-de-sac length variance on Pelican Way South. The applicant is again requesting these variances. Staff considers these changes, the changes reflected on this plat to be very minor in nature, and recommends approval of this revised preliminary plat, including the requested roadway variances, with the same stipulations of approval that were established in conjunction with the September 2012 approval.
Questions, staff? I've counted them. I think this is our seventh revision for the Grove. Is the Grove applicant here? Are you done? No, I mean revising. I'm glad you warned me. Thank you. Any questions?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 26, Continuing with the Grove, Preliminary Plat Review for the Grove, Phase 3, containing 39 lots on 52.8 acres located off Arno Road in the 2nd Voting District. Staff?
The revised site plan governing this development was approved at the March 2012 meeting. Also, I'd note that the revised site plan on this agenda revises a stipulation of approval, but the site plan layout doesn't change. The applicant is now requesting preliminary plat approval for the third phase of the development, which contains 39 lots and approximately 24 acres of open space. The plat is largely consistent in layout with that depicted on the approved site plan, with only minor changes to the configuration of roadways and building lots, which is typical at this stage of the development. The applicant is requesting a number of roadway-related variances, including design speed variances on Road A and Road B, roadway grade variances for 300 and 350-foot segments of Road A and Road B respectively, and right-of-way width variances from 50 feet to 40 feet on Road A, B, and C. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat as well as the requested roadway variances. In conjunction with final plat consideration, the following items must be addressed. 1, establishment of a performance bond for roads drainage and erosion control. 2, establishment of a performance bond for water improvements in favor of Milcroft and Utility District. 3, establishment of a performance bond for the wastewater collection system. 4, submission of landscaping plans and establishment of appropriate performance bonds for landscaping. 5, execution of a stormwater maintenance agreement and submission of an operation and maintenance plan for stormwater improvements. And 6, submission of the approved final plat in DWG format on recordable media based on the Tennessee State Plan Coordinate System prior to signature and recording of the plat.
Questions, staff?
Is there a move for approval? Recommendation, staff?
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? I hear none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 27, Preliminary Plat Review for Hillsborough Cove containing 20 lots on 34.09 acres located off Old Hillsborough Road in the 9th Voting District. Staff?
The concept plan governing this development was reviewed at the June 2013 meeting. The applicant is now requesting preliminary plat approval for this 20-lot traditional subdivision. The preliminary plat is largely consistent in layout with that depicted on the concept plan. A short cul-de-sac has been added between lots 105 and 106, thereby eliminating the need for a cul-de-sac length variance for the primary roadway. Department of Sewer's Disposal Management has reviewed and approved the request. Pending approvals of the roads drainage and erosion control plans by meeting date, staff recommends approval of this preliminary plat. In conjunction with final plat considerations, the following must be addressed. 1, prior to final plat submission, the applicant shall submit HOA documents for review and approval by the county attorney's office. The approved HOA documents must be recorded prior to recording of the final plat. 2, prior to final plat submission, the deceleration lane at the site entrance must be completed in accordance with the approved plans. 3, establishment of a performance bond for roads drainage and erosion control. 4, establishment of a performance bond for water improvements as specified by HB and TS Utility District. 5, submission of landscaping plans and establishment of a performance bond for landscaping improvements. 6, execution of stormwater maintenance agreement and submission of an operation and maintenance plan for stormwater improvements. And 7, submission of the approved final plat in DWG format on recordable media based on the Tennessee State Plan Coordinate System prior to signature and recording of the plat. A couple of notes, Mr. Chairman. The first is that the roads drainage and erosion control plans have been approved. And then, secondly, we've received a number of letters and emails related to this item, and those letters and emails have been placed in front of you as well.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, staff? Comments? While you're thinking about it, the commissioners want to make a little presentation. Commissioner Brockman, I've lost you. Ernie, I'll let you go next. Ladies first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and commissioners. First of all, I'd like to thank you for allowing me to address this proposed development tonight. I said all along that once people found out about it, they would, my phone would be ringing off the hook, and people would be saying, "How did you let this happen?" Well, it took one article in The Tennessean, and you can see tonight that these people are here in attendance because of this proposal. It's not business as usual. It is something that could be the beginning of the domino effect. I even have a letter, in fact, from a man from Tokyo. Just received it today by email. Saw the article in the paper. I'm writing you. I'm living in Tokyo. I'm finding my way back. I've been buying property on Old Hillsborough Road, and it's a treasure. And to see this happen is wrong. It just doesn't fit. I told someone earlier, if we'd been able to have some dialogue on the ground on Old Hillsborough Road from the community, we might not even be here tonight because it's an overwhelming ethic that exists out there. And that is large estates and small farms. It is a loss if we begin to the suburbanization of this area. And let me just say that something, it needs to be explained to the public, and that is, it is a 34-acre parcel of land. And people continue to say that, "Well, gosh, they're only putting 20 houses. They could put 34." You can't put 34. You know that, but the public doesn't understand that. So, for the public's sake, let me explain that each house has to be on a septic tank. And that septic tank has to have an A and a B, and it has to have a drain field A and a B. And because of that, land is taken up for that purpose. You have floodplain on this property. That's part of the scenario. You have required setbacks and open space. That's part of it. 20 houses is the most you can get on this parcel, given our zoning regulations. However, it doesn't meet the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, which was the first piece of our review back about seven years ago. And it states very clearly in that language that this is to be an area for rural preservation. And so, that, it doesn't meet the language of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan for preservation, rural preservation, period. In fact, the community is here to say this is not appropriate for the Old Hillsborough Road corridor. It's so important for us to protect. It's really our responsibility, and we have the authority to protect the assets of Williamson County. And this is one of those assets. It's just 34 acres, but within the fabric, when you look at a map, when you look at a map, you see that this is the Harpeth River Valley. This is the scenic historic area that has these characteristics. Just at a Williamson County Highway Department meeting on Wednesday, huge win. We have worked diligently in this community to save Old Natchez Trace, to get it paved, quote, "in place", and save it as a treasure. And you know what? It's going to happen because everyone said it was important to preserve that little road that's part of history. And now, when the plan goes forward, we've had a wonderful landscape architect hired to give us design concepts, and they were approved yesterday. So wonders do happen in this county. So, let me just say that, so the reasons I would ask you to defer would be because there have been issues raised in three areas. One, I just mentioned, which is the whole community character based on the land use plan of rural preservation. The second one is the floodplain. All right. These, the floodplain elevations that we use today are based on older studies. New studies have been performed. Those maps haven't come out yet. They're not official, but they have been made available to Metro Nashville. We can ask to get those maps earlier to look and see if some of these lots are compromised by changes in the floodplain in the back. Wouldn't that be, wouldn't that be something that would be responsible on our part, rather than letting the developer have lots on acreage that's going to be compromised by the floodplain based on the new field studies? And then just say, "Oh, well, you can get flood insurance"? I just don't think that's the right way to go. So you've got that issue. And we can begin the process to get those earlier than they're going to be submitted. And I don't think they're coming out until the spring, but the data is available. Old Hillsborough Road, I said in my email to some of you that it's become a literal racetrack, and I am not exaggerating. People are flying down that road. The traffic on that road has changed exponentially in the last five years. So even 20 houses can have an impact. And so, if we could look at the capacity and the safety on Old Hillsborough Road, which is a state highway, that would be in order. I just think there is enough concern that, in order to gauge the impact, we just need a little room right here to have some dialogue with the developer. Look at this information. Look at this, the issues that have been raised, and see if we can just pause here to reflect and get a product that the community could embrace. It's possible. It's possible, and y'all have that authority tonight to do that. I don't mean to make a speech, but I just think I get a letter from a man from Tokyo, and he says, "The beauty and appeal of Williamson County can be found in some of its purest form along Old Hillsborough Road. It is not found in 1-acre subdivisions, but in the scenic vistas of horse farms and pastures and historic homes." We have it. We have something, you know, we could, you could call us the Middleburg, Virginia of Williamson County. And they have tremendous growth up in northern Virginia, but they recognize the value of that scenic spot around Middleburg, and it's tremendous. So I would ask you tonight, please consider deferral. You have the authority, and give us a little bit more time.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Every time I follow Ms. Brockman, it's hard to meet her passion in any kind of community setting that she certainly believes in. But I would echo her comments. And I want to share some, I've lived in Montpelier Farms, which is right off the Old Natchez Trace, for 27 years. I see at least two of my neighbors here tonight. I live in a cul-de-sac. I've lived there 27 years, and I'm the rookie. I mean, that tells you a lot right there. I am the rookie after 27 years. Nobody moves out, and they like to see it stay, they like to see it stay the same. But I had a personal experience in 2010 that I want to share with this commission. It really has to do with the flood, the floodplain. The floodplain, when you look at ones that's available today, it goes up to Hillsborough Road, and that's where it stops. So we had the flood during 2010. I was sitting at home, didn't have any gas. I thought I needed to go down and get gas. And I decided to go down over Hillsborough Road, down to a service station. And as I got down in the, somewhere right around Saddleup, if you know where on Hillsborough Road where the Saddleup is, up there, the water was already coming across the road and going into another field. I went through it, and I stopped, and I said, "I may not be able to get back in because if I didn't get back home, there was no other way to go to get there because of the flood." Now, how is that, and what Ms. Mary was talking about, those maps are available. They may not be public out until spring of 2014, but they are available right now, as I understand it, in Nashville. With all due respect to this body, this body approved the landings, which was across the river over there close to Cottonwood. So a lot of those homes built in that flood, that lowland down there flooded during 2010 flood, along with ones in Cottonwood. They went in the flood. We have all these, this water used to be soaked up by fields. Now we got concrete, and it's got to go somewhere. And I saw it going across Old Hillsborough Road. I saw that in my own eyes. Drove through it, and the water was still rising at that time. And so, these houses that border, or these lots that border the river, I would submit to you that we don't know how far that floodplain comes up in there. And so, if people are going to buy homes that are under construction up in there, And so if people are going to buy homes that are under construction up in there, we don't know what's going to happen to them. I did see the landings. I saw the water come across Old Hillsborough Road. I know that for a fact. So I would ask, I understand from talking to Mr. Lackey, that it can only be deferred for 30 days. That's all. And then after that, it's either voted up or voted down. But we're asking for at least that 30 days to put together as much as we can to maybe persuade this body to what we think is the right thing. Thank you for letting us address the commission, Mr. Chairman, and I'll be glad to answer any questions if anybody wants any.
Any questions? Thank you, Commissioner. The applicant here.
Brian Eccles from Dickens Wright Law Firm, representing the applicant. I would like to make some remarks about this issue. Obviously, this body's function is to review and approve Platts and other designs to ensure that they meet the requirements for approval. As staff has indicated, this plat meets all requirements for approval. It meets the concept plan, which this body has previously approved and is consistent with that plan. So just like the other Platts that were considered previously tonight, this should, as a matter of course, be approved. But I want to address the comments that you've heard tonight about character. This land is zoned essentially for one unit per acre, as you've heard. It used to be suburban estate. It's been zoned that way since 1988. If you look at the big zoning map and take it into context, what you find is that this is a transitional zone. You have the urban growth boundary of Franklin to the east, very much more dense. You have an RP1 here. You go across Highway 46, and you get into RP5. If you go farther west, you get back into RP1 as you transition to the Fairview UGB. It's a classic transitional approach that's good planning. It's good planning because in a county that is growing, the way this county is growing, you have to accommodate growth where you can, and you have to preserve open space where you ought to. And that's what this zoning has done, and that's what is being followed. Now, I understand something. When you have transitions, that means you've got lines. And when you've got lines, there's tension at those lines, and that's exactly what you're seeing tonight. You're seeing tension between the people in the RP5 and other areas that want to extend that over to the RP1 area. But that's not what this body is called upon to do. This body is called upon to ensure that all rules, ordinances, zoning requirements have been met. And it's not just a stark transition. There's a significant aspect of RP1 that didn't exist, at least this strongly, for suburban estate in the older ordinance. You've got a number of resource protection standards that even on the face of the plat, this plat and the development under it will be required to meet. Those govern waterway protection, steep topography, karst topography, flood hazard area protection, wetlands, woodland and tree protection, and historic and cultural resource protection. Once again, this plat has complied with those additional standards above and beyond the mere zoning category. And this is a developer who has a proven track record in Williamson County, one who has, in multiple developments, taken care to protect historic resources, worked with Harpeth River Watershed and other consultants to ensure that's very innovative approaches to protect waterway resources and other sensitive resources. Is the only developer I'm aware of that has included affordable housing voluntarily in their developments at their own expense. So this is not a fly-by-night developer who hasn't been here for very long. It's a developer that has taken a very responsible approach. And we are asking tonight that this body apply the rules and regulations that should be applied and approve this plat. Having said that, I have the engineer, Tim Turner, I have the land planner, Jason Goddard, and they're available to answer any questions, as am I, and the applicant is here as well. We appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Discussion? Comments? Thoughts? Yes, ma'am.
The developer, I would like to ask if he has reviewed the new data that's going to be included in FEMA's new flood maps.
Whomever. Your engineer, probably your...
Well, let me, I'll address it. The reason why the new flood maps are not out is because they haven't been approved. They haven't been issued by FEMA, who has the authority to issue them. The reason why those are, you heard it, that there are maps available, there is data available. That data has not been properly assessed, finalized, put out for public comment, and it's not something that can be consulted with any kind of authority or competence. And therefore, it should not be a basis for deferral because it won't be, if it is released, it will be released next spring, and it's not available for consultation now. And so it's not something that either this body or we can rely on at this point. The developer, if that changes, the developer will be the one who has to manage based on a changed map. But I will tell you, anecdotally, during the 2010 floods, this property did not flood. It's adjacent across the river from Billstone Farms, which took the brunt of the water. But that's an anecdotal. I don't know what the maps will show.
Susan, to follow up on that, I had a discussion with Floyd today. They wouldn't release that to us. We have asked, and I think it's for the reason that it's not been finally approved yet. Unfortunately, my experience with FEMA is there, if they say 14, it'll probably be 14 and a half or 15 is typically when they release that. So I expect that would be the case.
Other questions? Don?
Several questions for staff, if I could, Mr. Chairman. See, on the other screening, it's 15-foot for a visual separation. In a situation like this, you consider 15-foot adequate?
Mr. Crowhan, 15 feet is what the ordinance requires for a buffer. The old ordinance, as you may or may not remember, didn't require a buffer between this kind of subdivision and adjacent land uses. So that's something that has been added. And it wasn't intended to be a solid visual screen, but rather a strip within which some landscaping could be planted to soften the transition between properties. So yes, sir, it certainly meets the requirements of the ordinance.
Okay, I understand it meets the requirements, but I just wanted, in this situation, this kind of a unique situation, I feel. The other question is, will the developer be asked to help fray the cost of the intersection of Old Natchez and Del Rio? Or does this enter into this?
It does not. The developer in this case will be required to install a deceleration lane in front of the property, the side entrance, but no off-site improvements beyond that. Based on the county's zoning ordinance and regulations.
The other question I have is, the traffic coming out of the subdivision, in what direction, on the traffic study, do they feel that the traffic will go? Will it be going down Hillsborough Road towards 96, down Del Rio? Which direction?
Because of the size of this development, a traffic study per se was not required, that's not required until you get much larger in terms of the development. The county's traffic shed methodology, however, was required and did result in some further restrictions based on traffic. But because a traffic study was not required, again, because of the size of the project, they didn't do a directional split. So that data is not available, but I imagine that there'll be a combination of people turning right and people turning left.
Okay. And the last question, Mr. Chairman, I have this of the applicant. If there were to be a 30-day deferral or till the next meeting, so the property owners in the area and everybody could get comfortable with this new subdivision coming in, how much problem would that cause you?
I think the appropriate question would be, what would be the purpose of that 30 days? If the purpose of that 30 days is to get the property owners comfortable with this development, I think you can see that that's not likely to happen. I think if there were something to be addressed in that deferral period, that would make sense. But there is literally no deficiency to be addressed, no questions to be answered. So the deferral is inappropriate, and yes, it would result in some issues with respect to the property.
PJ?
Mr. Chairman, my question's staff. Down Old Hillsborough Road, I guess this resource protection standard is all, you have your one-acre lots, and you have your five-acre lots. How is the rest of the properties up and down that road zoned? Is it a transition, or most of the properties are something for one-acre lots?
This is speaking pretty generally, but in that area, the bulk of the east side of Old Hillsborough Road is and has for many years been zoned roughly one unit per acre. It's zoned rural preservation one currently, whereas the east side of the road is historically and is currently zoned at a one unit per five-acre.
You said east and east, so...
I'm sorry. East is one unit per acre, the RP1. The west side is the RP5 and has been zoned similarly for many years.
Okay. Thank you.
PJ, one other thing. Counsel for the applicant said it's been zoned that way since '88. Our research indicates it's been zoned that way since '77. So it's been that way over 30 years.
So we recently, the last two or three years, have done a plan review of the whole county. I would assume this area was, the plan review was part of it, and this is kind of what we all accepted and agreed upon?
That would be my judgment, yes.
Yes, okay.
Other thoughts?
Mr. Chairman. I know we've talked about this during the last month. I was uncomfortable with it. Still a little uncomfortable with it. And based on some of the issues brought by tonight, I'll make a motion to defer for 30 days.
Is there a second? Motion made and seconded.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah. Till the September meeting.
Thank you. Thank you, counsel. You have the discussion?
Do we need to state the reason why we deferred it?
Counsel? Do you hear the question?
I believe Commissioner Walton stated the reasons for his deferral.
You have the discussion? I hear none? Preparative vote? Voice vote? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, no?
No.
No. Raise your hands for aye, please. One, two, three, four, five, six. How many we have here tonight? Eight? Nine? 11? The motion carries. Thank you. The project is... If y'all want to take a minute, you can stay and join with us for the next hour or so, but you can also leave now if you'd like. Final, final, final plat for the Grove. Section 1, revised, 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 containing two lots on 458 acres located off Arnold Road in the 2nd voting district.
The final plat for this section of the development was initially approved at the May 2008 meeting, and a revised final plat was approved in June 2012. The applicant is now requesting approval of another revised final plat for this section in order to ensure that the boundary of this section matches the revised boundary of the Phase 1 preliminary plat, which was considered as item 25 on this month's agenda. As these changes consist of minor boundary adjustments to the existing Platts, staff recommended the preliminary and final Platts be considered together at this meeting. Staff considers the changes reflected on this plat to be very minor in nature, and provided that the revised preliminary plat, which was item 25, is approved, which it was, staff recommends approval of this revised final plat with the stipulation that the applicant must submit two copies of the approved final plat in DWG format on recordable media based on the Tennessee State Plan Coordinance System prior to signature and recording of the plat.
Motion made and seconded. Any other nominations? Yeah. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. The motion carries. Vice Chair. Nominations, the floor is open. Mr. Crowhan is our current vice chair. Motion made and seconded. Any further nominations? See some nominations. All in favor, say aye. Mr. Crowhan's vice chair. Help me out, Mike. I screw this up every year. Secretary, I know, but we got another one after that.
Yes, sir. Secretary...
Is whom?
Secretary Pro Tem. The secretary is me, as planning director currently.
And Pro Tem?
Is Mr. Holmes.
Holmes. I knew Aaron had some responsibility somewhere. Nominations for secretary? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries. Secretary Pro Tem. Is there a second? Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. Mr. Holmes, you're a landslide. Okay. Any other business? Shut it down. We're out of here. Come back and visit with us every week now.